The race for Fate City Council is a couple of places that are open and we've got two races that are in a runoff and we have one of the candidates running for Fate City Council. That is Chris Ash and we're here for some straight talk Rockwall County. I'm Bunker Bob and this is the Bunker Bob Show. Well, that's right. It is great to have as our guest, one of the candidates who is running for Fate City Council and as I try to do, I focus everything Rockwall County and Fate is certainly a big, big part of Rockwall County. Chris, it is great to have you with me today.
Thank you very much. It's great to be here. This is a wonderful setup and I appreciate you making time.
You're very welcome and I wanted to make sure that your levels were, we can hear you perfect and we can. So, well, you know, it's funny, we, I just asked you before the show a little bit where you're from. You're from the town of El Paso as Marty Robbins sings.
Yes, born there but was not there very long. My dad was in the Army and was in for 20 years and so we were off and gone. I think the next stop was Germany, I think, after that.
Really?
And moved around a lot. So, I'm, I'm an Army brat growing up and finally eventually made my way back to the Lone Star State.
What, regular Army?
Yes.
You might bother too, so I can relate. That's good. Well, and so how long have you lived in Fate?
Lived in Fate about 12 years.
Well, it's really grown in those 12 years. I mean magnificently. So, when you got here, how big was, was the town?
I don't know the population, but the-
Cause it's about 18,000 now.
Yeah, the, the sign was still up that when we moved in, as you came into, we're in Wood Creek, so as, as you came along 66, towards that neighborhood, I remember distinctly the sign saying Fate Population, you know, like 600 or something like that. It was, it was just-
Golly, 600.
So, yeah, it's, it's, it has grown a ton. We've been in Rockwall County for 19 years roughly total and so we've seen, you know, we've seen a lot of change in that amount of time to the county and to Fate, of course.
Yeah, so good and bad. What would you say is the best, best part of the, of what you've seen over these last years?
Well, it's, it's great to see like Texas and Rockwall doing well, right? There's, there's people coming here. They're coming for a reason. We've got jobs, we've got affordable housing and there's obviously reasons why we have those things and other places don't, in my humble opinion. And so I, I, I like to see that. And then of course it's fun, you know, there's, there's restaurants and stores and things that you, you hope maybe you get one day and you see some of those come in and those are nice and that's, that's the positives.
Well, I love the fact that you, that you kind of said what you just said. I mean, because there's reasons why as a, as a state that we are successful in keeping the tax rate low and, and keeping things, you know, affordable, I guess, is what, what I would say. So, I know what I think, but it doesn't matter what I think. My, my audience knows what I think, but what do you think? Why do you think those are the reasons, are the main reasons for all of that?
And let me first just say, I am not a, I don't consider myself a politician, so my, my answers may not be polished.
Well, and in fact, just to add to that, this is the first time you've ever run for anything.
For anything.
Right.
I, I never even ran for, you know, student body council.
Okay.
So, this is, this is truly the very first time.
Wow.
But no, if, my, my thoughts on why Texas as a whole and why this area is doing good is, is, you know, I don't mean to parrot your answers, but you know, the, the taxes are a, are a big reason. We, we have no income tax, we keep other taxes low, we have economic policies that foster, you know, growth and, and support businesses, right? We, we don't regulate businesses and the individual to death in the state of Texas. And so I, I think it's no more complicated than, than that, although maybe it is and I just don't know.
And there's other things too, but I, I think you hit on the major issues that, that make our state so attractive. And of course, we've got lots of people coming into our, our state who have, who want our, all of the, the plenty, but they also kind of want to see some, some, some other things along with that. They, they have a different, I guess, philosophy than maybe you and I do that they think that higher taxes means better government. We just see it as, as bigger government. Do you agree?
Yeah, in general, I certainly do.
Yeah.
Yeah. You, you, obviously you have to have some taxes, but no, it's, personally speaking, you know, the more individual freedom and, and choice that you've got as to where your money goes, I think will by and large make better decisions than someone else making those decisions for our money.
Yeah, so let's just talk a little bit about that. So, you know, a state, a city government is very different from a state government, which is very different from a federal government, although the state and federal governments are oftentimes very much alike in the way they, they do things. And oftentimes as conservatives, we, we like to say we like limited government. However, in a city where, which is very closely held, oftentimes you, you see the, the desire for growth. So, let's talk a little bit about growth and maybe what your vision for the city of Fate might look like.
Yeah, great question. You know, growth is going to happen still in Rockwall County and in Fate. Whether you want it to or not, my 15-year-old son, he reminds me all the time as we're stuck in traffic somewhere, you know, Dad, I wish all these people would stop moving in. We, we see all the houses being built and, and you know, there's, there's pros and cons with that, but part of it first is there's a lot of private property in the area and if you agree with the principles of limited government, then part of what goes along with that is, is individuals have the right to do with their property what they want.
Absolutely.
So, they have the right to sell it to be developed as long as it's within certain zoning standards and things like that, if it fits the other regulations. So, there is going to continue to be offers made for land and homes and other things built on that land. So, the growth is going to come. So, my vision, as you indicated for, for Fate is I, I, I want to take the bull by the horns, right? If, if growth is going to come, I want to take that by the horns and we manage it, we channel it in the directions we want, we get the kind of growth that we want, we avoid the kind that we don't. And then we also do our very best to try and keep that small-town feel that brought so many people there in the first place.
All right, let's talk, let's talk Turkey. What are those kinds of things that you don't want to see?
So, you, me personally, I don't want to see lots of huge, big box stores coming in, right? We, we want some retail. Retail in a place like Fate keeps the taxes low for all the people living in the single-family houses. If, if, I don't want to name names of other cities, but you don't have to go very far west of here to see towns where it is just miles and miles of single-family houses. And that may be more attractive to live by than, than a store, but one day all those developers leave and they leave behind huge infrastructure needs and then all those costs fall squarely on the taxpayers in all those homes. So, if we let in the right kind of retail stores, more small businesses, more or less national chains, right? Local chains or local individually-owned places, we can get some neat places that we all enjoy eating at or going to or shopping at. We can help choose the location that, that, you know, there's never a perfect location for any of these things, but those are some of the things.
How, how do you prevent it?
Prevent.
How do you prevent the big boxes from moving in?
Well, so they're, they're often going to go to where they can get the most attractive deal, right?
Yeah. And what do you mean by that?
Well, dollars and cents for them. They, they want rebates, they want-
They want tax breaks.
Exactly, exactly.
And which is ironic because a lot of, of cities, McClintock Chisholm is a great example of this, that they're, that they're basically putting hundreds of thousands of dollars in infrastructure for, to spur on economic growth. But again, the, the taxpayers are bearing that burden, not the businesses that, that we're trying to attract. So, so, so give me an example of what you might, what that might look like.
And it's, it's hard to do. I'll-
Sure, sure.
Do that as best I can. So, they're in, if you can call an area downtown Fate, okay, if there is such a thing, they've got a really cool mixed-use area, right, right in the heart, okay? We, they've got the Fate Creamery, wonderful ice cream establishment, really good. Go try it.
Okay.
I don't own it or not related to them, but I like it.
And you're not getting a kickback for it. All right, good deal.
You know, there's a Mexican restaurant that's set to come in next to it and then, and then there's office spaces and above there's living spaces. And so there's a really great example of mixed use. It's not a, I have nothing against Walmart. I shop there, but you know, it's not a huge Walmart with a giant footprint and parking lot. It's done the right way. It's, it's attractive and, and it fits with the community.
And, and the nature of, of, of business today and the way, way business is done is there's so much done online that a lot of these, these box stores are, is almost becoming superfluous, that, that they're, that, that cities are actually getting more tax money from the Amazon orders because if they're, if they're, if they're ordering from that, from that city, you get the taxes from that. So, so I guess you, are you, are you trying to control the, the number of businesses as well?
Yeah, I'd say so. And, and you know, to how you strike the balance, I'm, I'm not presently serving on the city council. They have, you know, more information than I do on, on some of the details at present, but one of the things I really liked at a, at a recent city council meeting that I attended was there was a discussion of, of developers coming in to, to build and they were actually raising, and forgive me again, I don't have these details at my fingertips, but the city council had decided that they were going to raise some of what these developers had to pay, okay? And the developers were lined up to say why that was a terrible thing and it was going to mean less, less homes being built. And so a lot of the people in Fate, that was kind of like, great.
That's what they want.
Yeah, we, we don't, we want to find the right balance. We're still attracted to come in, but we're not the bargain basement, right? Where everybody, hey, go to Fate, you know, they'll, they'll cut you a deal. We want to build everything there, put our big stores in. It's a matter of finding that right balance. It's got to be attractive, but you want to attract the right kind of fish and, and not every fish in the pond.
You don't want to become Frisco.
I didn't say it, but that's not-
I'll say it. I mean, I, I, I supported a guy running for state rep who, who was a Frisco councilman and, you know, he was, he was doing a lot to, to try to stop that. So, you know, it's funny, we, we started this conversation and, and I haven't even gotten the questions that I, that I had for you because this is pretty natural. You know, it's, what I love about our community is there's so few people who are really here to be politicians, although we have those certainly in our community, but people like you, it's, you know, to have just a, an everyman, if you will.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, so it's, it's very exciting to, to have you here on the show. You know, I think one of the questions, and I, and I send, just like I do with, with, with everything, I always send candidates all the questions that I'm going to ask. This is not about gotcha. This is about giving candidates the opportunity to, to, to share what they believe and give them a platform to do that. And, and one of the, the questions that I, that I gave you was, who do you see as your primary constituent?
Great question. To me, it was an easy answer, which is it's, it's the citizens, the citizen taxpayers. I, I maybe could give you a big philosophical reason why, but I, I don't know that it's necessary to me. It shouldn't be necessary.
It, it really is a gimme question on purpose because, you know, there are a lot of people who, who ironically have a very different viewpoint on that and they, they see developers or, or, or they want to bring a lot of people into that, into that. And, and as a, as a conservative, you know, I would expect an, an elected official to have that as their, their primary constituent. So, I love your, your answer. Do you, do you attend city council meetings? If so, how often?
I do. I've attended many this year, earlier in the year, some virtually and, and in person now as, as many as I can. I, I don't know that I could give you a number for the year, but I, I try to go as, as often as I can.
Now, you're, you're, you're running for an open seat. So, how do you feel the council's doing in representing the citizens right now?
So, there, there's always, just as no person is perfect, right? No city council is perfect and there's always room for improvement, but I will say by and large, I think they're doing quite well. They, they won a, in a 2020 Economic Development Award for, for cities under 20,000. And, and that was again, specifically for economic development, right? And that's, hey, that's something you want to see, at least I do for my city council. I want to see one that's winning awards like that. At the most recent city council meeting I attended there, again, I don't have the details here. I, I wish I had a crib sheet or something, but they, their, their person in charge of finance and, and investing for the city also won an award. He was one of only 11 for similarly-sized city in Texas, which my understanding is there's a lot of similarly sized-
There are. Yes, yes.
They're doing things well with the money. I, I like that they are, I, I believe from the ones I've talked to, they, they share, I think most of them, I, they can speak for themselves, but I think they share that vision of, you know, we're going to grab onto this growth and we're going to, we're going to use it to become the kind of city that we're not just happy with now, but our kids 20 years from now are going to say, you know, "Great job, Mom and Dad. Fate is still a great place to live."
Well, that's, you know, so, you know, when, you had alluded to the fact that there's reasons why people move to Fate. You've been here 18 years, you said. So, why did you choose Fate over other, other cities?
So, I'll, I'll answer this with a story. Went, went to law school in, in Austin.
I'm sorry, okay.
I understand. I see the Aggie sign.
Yes, that's right. That's right.
You, you choose it for the, for the reputation, right?
Sure, sure, sure.
Not necessarily the other parts.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So, yeah, we could talk about Austin another time.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure we could.
So, I, I get a job in Dallas and again, Army brat. I am not familiar with this area at all, okay? So, my wife and I head up here and we, you know, with the internet wasn't quite what it is now, but we found some areas that were of interest to us and we had a realtor meet us and show us a house. Again, I won't say the name of the town, but as we got out of the car and she met us, she said, "You don't want to live here, folks. Let me, let me show you something that's a little more your, your area." And we were, and we were glad she did. So, she, she put us onto a few areas and one of those was, was Rockwall, okay? Rockwall area. And those of you who come out here and liked it, you know, it's, there's that neat feeling of driving across the bridge.
Yeah, there is, isn't there?
You feel some separation. And it was still much smaller. The traffic wasn't what it is now on the bridges and everything, but we got here, we loved it and we had our first little home in Rockwall, Rockwall.
Okay.
And-
City of Rockwall. Yep.
City of Rockwall. And you're paying off student loans, you're, you're looking forward to getting a little bit bigger house as your family grows. And as we did that, we had some friends out in the Wood Creek area. Our kids are still young and we went out there and just a, a neat neighborhood. So, affordable, right? Affordable housing, neat neighborhood, got the right kind of feel, got it. It's the small town near bigger town.
Yeah.
Which, which a lot of people go for.
Yeah.
And good schools. Those, those are the reasons why we liked it.
That's great. And, and I think you're right. I think that's probably why most people moved to Fate and, and cities like it. You know, what do you, what do you see as, as Fate's biggest challenges?
It is absolutely that growth.
Okay.
You know, the numbers that I do recall are, I think it was 700, we were a population around 720 years ago. So, this is a little bit before me. And now it's 18 some odd thousand.
Wow.
So, that's, that's a ton. That's a ton. And that's strain on roads. It's, you've got to have the police force, right, to make sure everybody's safe. You've got to have the utilities, all those things that go with it. There's, it's a lot. That's a lot of strain and, and for the future too. So, it's keeping up with that so that, you know, you can have your, your yard landscaped with a plan or you can just see what grows up around your yard. And this being Texas, I, I know everyone, you know, doesn't want to choose that second option. So, you, you need to have a, a vision and a plan. So, it's not, you're, you're another 20 years down the road and you look back and are like, "How did this happen? How did, how did, where did this come from?" You know?
Yeah.
"Why is that here?"
Yeah, that's, you know, that's a great way to segue into the next question. So, so with that in mind, are, is, is there an issue or set of issues that you really want to focus on?
I thought about that. There's, there's, I really don't have a, a specific line item issue that, that I'm hanging my hat on. I, I really don't. It's, it's under the heading of, you know, I, I've got a, my oldest kid is 18 and my youngest is six, right? And when that last one leaves and my wife and I high-five each other that they're headed out, we want to look around Fate and, and just be like, "We don't want to move," you know? And may, maybe we'll downsize our house or something like that, but we want to stay here because it's grown the right way. And, and I think that's, it's all about growth to me. It's channeling and managing that growth.
How many kids do you have? I didn't ask you about your family. How long you been married? I apologize for not starting out with, with the most important things.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I've been married 21 years, four kids.
Four kids and they're ages 18?
18, 15 and a half.
The half is important, huh? He's ready to drive, it sounds like.
He's got his learner's permit.
Yeah.
11 and a half. The half's important to her too. And then down to, she'll, she'll be our youngest, I, I already said the wrong age. That's horrible. She'll, she'll be eight actually next month in December.
Daddy's going to have some talking to tonight, yeah.
She's going to give it to me.
So, what, are you in RISD?
Yes.
Okay, so what do you, how do you think the schools are doing? I mean, boy, a lot of challenges. And I know this is off topic, but I just thought, man, why don't we, I'd love to have your point of view.
Boy.
We just had Amy Hilton on here who's, who's newly elected. So, I'm sure she'd love to hear your point of view as on that as well.
You know, one of, one of the debates that we had was at the Rockwall County Courthouse and, and we, those that were running for offices of Fate, we, we went last that night and we got to sit there and listen to the, the school board candidates.
Yeah.
And that was really interesting. And I realized, you know, I, I'm only looking at this from one side. I'm looking at it from the side of parents with two kids in high school and two kids still in elementary school. And it would be very easy for me to make lots of complaints.
Sure.
But listening to them and how hard the teachers are working, how many hours they're putting in without a increase in pay was, it was sobering for me. And, and I, I realized, you know, there's, there's two sides to this, like there is to a lot of things. And I, I think that they are working very hard. I think they've got a huge challenge of, of what we've all been dealt with, right? As we try to adapt to life in 2020. And I am going to nitpick on, as I talk to-
Sure, yeah. I'd love to hear this.
Sure. As I talk to my kids and as I talk to youth in the church I attend, you know, there's, there's a, there is a theme of they are, they have more work than ever. They have more homework. It's all online, but they, they are so busy. They, they work on assignments till late. And, and I, I'm guessing there's a feeling of pressure from the other, you know, from the, the teachers or the administration that we've, we've got to make sure these kids learn enough because we're not, they're not there in our presence to monitor that as well. And I think maybe the pendulum swung a little bit too far with the amount of work that they're giving.
Well, that's interesting.
So, that's, that's one dad's perspective and I don't pretend to know it all. And teachers, my, my dad was a teacher, after he retired from the Army. He was a teacher. So, I don't think I have it in for teachers. They, they do a lot and they, they have a huge, as I said, they've got also more hours, no more pay.
Yeah.
I don't know that there's any real winners in this situation. It's just kind of finding the right balance for the, the kids and the teachers. And overall, I, you know, it's, there's, there's no big complaints, just some small ones, I guess I'd say.
Boy, that's so true. And so, that, that was, I'll, I'll tell you, I, I love that Amy Hilton won for a lot of reasons, but one of them is she's a mom too. And as, as was all of the candidates, I shouldn't say it that way, but, but Amy was very involved in staying with the, watching the board and giving updates on Facebook and things. So, she, she's, I, I think that, that she would probably have some, some thoughts on that as well. So, I'm-
I'm sure. And she, I'm sure she could correct me on, you know, why I don't-
She may agree with you, you know, I mean-
Maybe she would.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, I, I've, I've got to go home and see my kids tonight and they'll, they're the ones I live with. So, I'm going to, I'm going to stand in their court.
That, that's your constituents when it comes to, yeah. I get that.
I get voted out by them. It's more serious than an election.
Oh, man, that's so true. Well, so, you know, Fate had, had their comprehensive plan. They had the meeting on, on that. You're, from your point of view, is this, this approach versus just sticking infrastructure down to the ground? You know, you already talked about that. What do you think of the comprehensive plan? Are there things that you like? Or more importantly, are there things that you're, that concern you?
Great question again. I, I, I don't have a, I don't have the comprehensive plan memorized.
No, no, of course not, yeah.
I haven't lived with it long enough to, to give specifics.
Sure.
So, I will, I will just say, I'm pleased that there is a comprehensive plan. I'm, I'm pleased with it overall. And if I am elected, that's absolutely something where, you know, I plan to spend a lot of time with and, and look at the details and just to say, you know, if, if the overall plan is good, do the steps that get us there, do they all make sense? Are they all warranted? Are they all necessary? Are there additional steps? Do some need to come out? And that's, that's something I, I look forward to spending enough time with if, if given the opportunity.
Since your primary constituent is, is the voters and the taxpayers, how, you know, being in that position kind of separates you oftentimes. How are you going to stay connected with the, with the people and be their representative?
Yeah, that's, I, I think it's always a, a little bit of a challenge to do, if I'm honest. You know, you've got some who, you know, they, they don't miss a, a city council meeting. They, they're, they're going to sit in the back and they're going to be there and be involved. And then you've got others who are busy with life and they, they just don't take the time or, or whatever. They hope it all turns out, right?
Yeah, until, until something goes wrong, they're, they're-
Right. You don't hear from them.
That's right, yeah.
And so it's like, some of those that are always there, they're going to reach out to you before you reach out to them. And they're going to let you know, "Hey, I don't like this" or "Good job on this." And, and you don't have to do any work with them. And it's how to connect with the others who are, are just going through the motions of life. And I don't think there's a perfect answer there, but we do live in an age where communication's easier than ever. And so there's a lot of platforms. We obviously can't do in-person as we could at one point. I, I look forward to doing more of that again, more town halls, that sort of thing.
Okay.
But, but I, I appreciate that there is a lot out there on, you know, whether it's individual city council person's pages or the city of Fate's website. There, there really isn't an excuse if you feel that you're a victim as a citizen of Fate of what's happening. I, I think with a little effort, you can at least be informed, if not engaged.
So, we've got a new congressman, Pat Fallon, who just got elected, great conservative guy. And he is part of the House of Representatives, which is the, which carries the purse, basically. As council member, you carry the purse. You're in charge of what taxes look like for the citizens. So, do you think, when you look at the tax rate and when, and you, and you look at what you're getting for your money, do you feel like it's, you're at the right place? And then the other question, follow-up that I want to have with that is, do you, do you foresee a tax rate increase and, and why?
The least popular of all subjects, right?
Yeah, but, but it's the most important, don't you think?
Certainly, certainly.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a, nobody wants to pay more in taxes. And, and let me see if I can go to your, your specific question. So, are, are we in the right place? I, I would say if we're not there, we're, we're, we're not far off.
Okay.
Okay. We, we've had a surplus the last couple of years, okay, which means we, there was more taxes paid than were necessary.
Yep.
And you certainly don't want year to year there to be a huge surplus, which, because that means you're taxing people too much, right?
That's right.
More than is necessary. That's not good. In my opinion, I think even worse is if you're running out of money, right? If you can't afford the essential services, utilities, the police, all those things that you have to have and can't cut corners on, that's even worse. So, it's, it's again, it's a, it's a tricky balance to find, right?
So, so, okay, when we talk surplus- So so, okay, when we talk surplus, um, we, what what would you want to do with that surplus? Do you want to save it? You want to put it toward debt to get people, get get the city out of debt? What what would you see as the best plan?
Oh, I I don't know that I know for sure the best, the very best use of that surplus, some things that would come to mind, just. Shooting from the hip are, um. You know, u- using that towards future needs so that you can keep taxes low.
Okay.
Right, as as you identify things, okay, here's an area that maybe we didn't anticipate. Um, perhaps COVID has made, uh, you know, we need to upgrade our our. Uh, utilities in some way to to handle the, I I'm speaking here, you know, about things I don't truly understand, but. Just as an example, if there was an anticipated need, can we use some of that surplus? I would certainly be in favor of doing that.
Okay.
Using the surplus in areas that would keep taxes the same or keeping them from having to be raised.
So so, and yeah, so specific areas, maybe law enforcement or uh, or fire, something like that. Where where there's a deple- a a deficiency.
Sure.
You want to add, yeah.
Um, you know, there's, that's where the money came from is for the taxpayers, it should be for their benefit.
I like that, that's that's a good point. Um, on the general election ballot, there was a proposition uh, to be for or against the city to authorize. Uh, issue and sell bonds for a public purpose of designing, constructing and uh, improving, expanding and. Equipping parks, trails and recreational families. That passed by the narrowest of margins, yeah, so uh, why do you think it passed? Why do you think it was so close? Because you know, uh, it's funny, I I did ask where you stood on it, but I'm not gonna ask you that, because I I think that that. A- a- as a conservative, I I think the people should make that decision. And that's what I like about the city of fate is, you know, they let the people do that, when I was mayor of McLennan Chisholm, I let the people decide if they wanted to raise the tax rate. Uh, or the sales tax as well, but that's what what's happened here, so why do you think it was so close? I have my opinions, but what do you think?
Um, a- and let me just real quickly respond there too, I I'm. Bonds are great, as you just said, for that reason, right? It's the democratic process in action.
Yeah.
Right, it's it's, and and I think as I've attended meetings, talked to people, I think we'll see more of that going forward. That's that's what I'm hearing and that's what I would be in favor of, right? More more citizen input and control on those types of things.
That, I love hearing that.
Um, so I I I like that it was on a bond, I like that the voters got to decide. And why did it pass? Um, I I'll throw, I, obviously, I don't know, okay? Uh, but I'll throw some some guesses out there.
Well, no, but the question is, why was it so close?
I apologize, so. Um, I think you've got, um, in the area of fate is that the majority of people are conservative, right? They're they're not about um, more government, more taxes, more money, right?
Right.
Therefore, keeping the government small, keeping it limited, and so I think. There understandably is is a lot of people are like, hey, with everything that's going on right now. Why do we want to sink a bunch of money into another park? There there already is parks, we can use those, the money could be used somewhere else, so I I understand that perspective. Um, eh, on the other side, you've got, I think, people cooped up in their houses more than ever. Working from home more than ever and, hey, man, I've been inside all day with the whole family. Let's go out to that park and go walk around and enjoy some of the nice Texas fall, winter, spring weather, okay? And so I I I think there is a desire for that, and then there's also just, there's somewhat of an expectation as as cities grow these days. That there are gonna be vibrant parks and trails, people have, uh, you know, whether they should have that sense. Or whether that's a sense of entitlement, uh, I I think there is legitimately a, um, you know, a feeling among some people that that's. Something important that a city provides for its citizens.
All right, so I I have a theory on it, so tell me what you think, because because, you know, living here in McLennan Chisholm, we only have one major development. Fate has several, ma- and they're not small developments, these are mega developments, and so. I I I had thought, well, I don't think this thing will have a chance, because so many people live in these big developments, they already have all of these amenities. Their HOA, they're paying their HOA, why would they want to want more? But I I think you brought to bear a very important point, that this COVID thing has really kind of uh, put put things to the test. That's a very insightful uh, point of view, I never thought about it that way.
And I hope it's, I hope it's correct.
Well, i- i- I think it's a, as as good an argument as any.
But yeah, you know, if if you've been out in the evenings and stuff, I I, we we joked, we never saw as many people walking their dog.
Isn't that true?
I think there is a desire of to to get out, get the masks off, even if you're not working from home, right?
Yep.
A lot of us have to wear those masks in the stores, in our workplace, and just to get out and have that fresh air. I I think was probably a part of it, whether that was small or great.
You know, are there, are there, are there propositions that you would like to see in the future for citizens to weigh in on, and if so, what what do you think those might look like?
I, I don't have any specific that I would name, other than, and we touched on this, you know, in general. I I I like that there's ongoing discussion of more issues being resolved by putting them on a ballot.
Hmm. Love that.
In connection with a bond or or in some, something similar, where it's, you know, the voters are gonna, are gonna own this. And and uh, people for or against have the responsibility to educate and and to, if they want to put their. Feelings towards it, if they want to emphasize something, but but at the end of the day, the the voters are gonna decide that, so I I I like that trend.
Mm-hmm. So we talked about a lot of issues, um, and again, I always want this to be an opportunity for for. For you to put your best foot forward, are there issues that we haven't talked about that that you'd like to address?
Not, not really in the context of the city of fate.
Okay.
Um, I, issues that are important for everyone these days, you know, is uh. Family faith, um, freedoms.
Hmm.
Right, we, um, I I'm gonna keep it city of fate, cause that was part of my request, uh, was was we talked local issues.
Yeah.
And so I won't go far beyond that, other than to say, um. We we were, we've just come, well, I guess we haven't come through it yet, we we just had a big election.
Yeah.
And there's gonna be things out of that election on many levels that will affect people's day to day life. I would say to the citizens of fate and to everyone out there, don't underestimate, don't overlook. How important the local elections are to affecting your everyday life. Okay, there there are certainly national ones that are huge and we care about and we need to be mindful of and 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 involved in. But having your community is is kind of the last resort, right? I mean, your home is is the very last. That's where you need to keep things the way you want them to be. Uh, but your community can be one step up of that, so fortifying your community with the right kind of people who have the right kind of values. I think is critical in in preserving the the nature, the field, the spirit. And and all those intangibles that are so important in in a community setting.
Well, that's great, I, you know, I I I want to make sure that you have an opportunity, uh. You know, races like these, the the biggest challenge that you're gonna have is getting people out to vote. Because this uh, the the election is on.
Nineteenth.
On the nineteenth, December nineteenth, and early voting is going to start on December one and uh. At the Wood Creek Amenity Center and uh. Wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's a me, that's a candidate meet and greet, uh, is gonna be on December first at the, uh, from seven to eight P, fifteen P M. Where people can come and obviously, I didn't ask all the questions that probably you thought I should ask, uh, so. That's gonna be your opportunity, but early voting will begin D- December second, and Election Day is, as you said, on the nineteenth. But Chris, before uh, before we go, I want to give you the opportunity to speak directly to the voters at that, on that camera right there. And just tell them uh, why they should uh, consider you for their next council member.
Thank you, and and thank you again for this opportunity, I I really do appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Um, so. I suspect there is a huge feeling of voter fatigue right now. Um, we had many thousands of people vote in the city council election, uh, often those elections don't get very many numbers. I I'm just gonna review with you the actual numbers of part of that, which is, um. We had three candidates on the ballots, one actually publicly withdrew. But nevertheless, uh, I guess because the timing, his name couldn't come off the ballot. And so he's still got several hundred votes, uh, which which was unfortunate that, uh, you know, voters weren't aware of that. Um, to avoid a runoff, we needed mo- one person needed more than fifty percent, under the way fake does their elections for these. Um, I originally on election night, they, on on the official Rockwall County site, I had fifty point three percent. And uh, notices went out from the city as they received it, that a hundred percent was reported in. And uh, by the next morning, I had learned that actually, um, I I don't make this up, mail in ballots. And I ended up with forty nine point nine four. So we're here for a runoff, um, I would ask you, if if you like what you've heard. Please show up despite the voter fatigue, help me get across the finish line. Um, my concern is we'll only have a few hundred voters now, cause it's a brand new election, there's no carryover from the prior one. And whereas I had several thousand that were wonderful and supporting me with their vote, um, I need you to come one more time. Sorry to have to ask, but uh, show up to that city hall one more time and vote. Um, it is, it does make a huge difference at the community level and I'd I'd be honored to serve. Um, I'm not doing this for the pay, I can guarantee you that. Cause I think it's twenty dollars per city council.
Oh, y'all actually get paid? Oh, my goodness, wow, twenty bucks, man.
Yeah, I'm I'm doing this, cause I want to serve in my community and I want it to go the right, grow the right way, so if you like what you've heard. Please come vote once more and uh, I would, I would appreciate your support.
You know, there's only one thing you said that I didn't like, and that was, I'm sorry to ask you to come out and vote. Because I I I think that's such a great opportunity, I mean, your father, my father. They 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 fought for that freedom and we're, we're the beneficiaries of of people like them and so many veterans out there. Who gave, uh, some gave, uh, some and and all gave, uh, all gave some and some gave all, uh, for our freedom, so. Yeah, don't ever apologize for that, I'm a loving, in a loving way, admonish, admonishing you.
And and well taken, I I retract that, that's that's a privilege and not a right.
It is. It is, and you know, I I've just got to say, there's a reason people don't come on my show, and that is because. This is a conservative show for conservatives and I, i- i- that should tell you something. Uh, that Mr. Ash has has come on this show, I love what he says about limited government and uh, and I, you know, I'm. I don't vote in this election, but I love to support and see people who have a philosophy that is. That is, that is like mine, that is, that is like most all of you who watch this show, and so that's. That's something that we should all get behind and be very excited about, and so I'm very, very grateful that you took some time. Out of your busy schedule to come on this show, and I really do ask that you take time. Uh, to get to the polls on December nineteenth or go vote early. Because ironically, uh, yours may be, uh, one of, one of the few votes out there, and when Mr. Ash says, there may be a few hundred. Compared to what, what we just saw, a few thousand votes, how many, how many people actually voted for for your race?
Uh, you know, I I only remember for me, it was, it was uh, between three and four thousand that had voted for me personally. Then it was about two and three thousand for the next.
So that's six thousand people, basically, and the reason why people are voting i- is because they're, they're there to vote for Donald Trump. Or or that other guy, and so, um, but bottom line, they're not gonna come back, most people will not, this is uh. So so your vote is precious, your vote is needed, so. Uh, regardless, yeah, I'm sure Mr. Ash would agree, that even if you're not gonna vote for him, please come out and exercise your right to vote, but. Uh, from from what I've heard, I think uh, Mr. Ash uh, definitely has a lot to give to uh, the citizens of fate. So I do hope you, uh, we'll see you out at the polls, I won't be there, cause I'm, I live in this, in in a different city of McLennan Chisholm. But uh, but I think that voters certainly have a great opportunity to elect a good conservative in this uh, in this election for sure. And and uh, so again, thank you, Mr. Ash, for coming on my show, and I hope that you will. Um, stay tuned, because we've got another candidate, uh, from for uh, Fate City Council in a different place, your place, what? Your place three, so we've got another candidate coming from another place on, uh, in State, uh, uh, Fate City Council. And so I hope that you'll tune in for that, so I hope that you have, in case we don't, eh, I I, we don't see you until after Thanksgiving. I hope you have a great Thanksgiving, uh, and uh, we will see you next time, I'm Bunker Bob, you have a blessed, blessed day.